This is ten o'clock A M and I'm calling this meeting of the Parks Recreation and Open Spaces Committee to order. We have a forum, all committee members are present. And currently, we have the following public on Zoom, Julie Amade. Hello Julie, Kitty Connolly, Hello Kitty and Laura and or Crosby Schwartz and we know there may be two of you so. You can each have opportunity to comment whatever appropriate, so welcome. And Haley, I should probably leave it on that screen. Do I see who else comes up? So. Also, we've. In terms of who's sitting where, we're having the committee sit at the table along, you know, David Gary and C C S D staff. And members of the public in the in the chairs. On the bylines and and. It not mandatory, but it'd be helpful if when you have public comment, if you're here, just come to the end of the table. So the owl can see you, the public can hear you better, that'd be great. That works. And for folks on on Zoom. We have. Director Farmer, we have Carrie and we have Shelley Becker from Dog Park and in the public and more to come. Let's see, agenda review, I don't have any changes at this point, just. Any questions, what's on the agenda? Roll on ahead. Ad hoc committee reports. Let me share on screen what we've got. This is in the agenda, I thought it would be useful with ad hoc committees with. You know, even the board, but also understanding committees, I've noticed often at meetings. Members of the committees, people in the public will ask. Who's on this committee, like when did it get formed, what is it doing, so I put this table to answer those three simple questions. And so at this point, at the last meeting, we figured out we don't have any. Didn't have any meetings carrying the board at that time, so we formed two. Two ad hoc committees. At the last meeting and with. With that, Shannon, do you have anything for us on the signage?
We met one time, it's right now, just David and myself. Jim and Kermit were listed but did not sign up for it. Unless they still want to, it's so fun. And we did meet, Julie Amade came and we. Our takeaway, our action item was to come back at the next meeting, which will be in January with ideas, three different ideas for fonts, colors and style. So that we can select and start from there. And then David has a little more time at the next meeting, we'll also talk about possible placement of certain signs, not every sign, but some signs.
Yeah, I was just reflecting as we as we drove into town, I was looking on that, you know, rodeo grounds road and not a sign to be seen.
And list is for cookies.
And the East Ranch Community Park Plan. I put in the agenda. What what we we jotted down in terms of what we think this committee is up to. At this point, we've we've met once, we've started a couple of draft. Documents with Shannon's help on Google Docs of. Here's the kind of things we want in the the plan where. That's a way for elementary to share with you now to have a look. And. Here's what we're thinking in terms of deliverables and timelines. It's in the packet. Questions and Shannon and Jeff add to that, but.
No, we created a collaborative sandbox to just get going and actually chunk out the different sections. The plan is modeled after other park plans in the county. And with the help of Jack Kiesel Designs, he was also designed some parks, you know, Jack. So that we have a good template for the plan, so we have a good start.
Is that it in the middle there? In the middle of the table?
No, we don't have anything, it's just it's just a mess on Google Docs right now.
Ah, so on on the middle of the table is eleven by seventeen packet that David Gary has put together. It's a phenomenal collection of. Of the maps and we've got. This jurisdictional map that's showing the boundaries of C C S D kind of in green, the C C S D own lots. And if you have a magnifying glass and you're really young, you might be able to get something out of it, it's great to have. But this drills that in. So that you can see what's where and. And David also have some info on. The conservation fees for the restrictions.
Yes, correct, though working with county and stuff like nature ended up coming across all the A P Ns. So that's what needs to be updated in this book and also on the map to go and have like every single one, it's a. Conservation season so that we were completely hundred percent aware on which ones are. Jumping into this a couple of months back, that's where it was, some of it was unknown, we got a little ahead of ourselves in some areas. So it'll correct that. The conservation, yes.
Right, so. Brings us to. The one. I guess at this point. You know, hands up, anyone in the public has questions on the ad hoc committees. Fair game, comments. And okay, committee member communications. What do y'all want to share? Maybe just kind of go around the table, I mean, starting Jeff, anything?
No, nothing.
Steve?
Alan, I'm at this time, okay, Jim?
You know, one thing we said last time, and I don't see it in this document, is that we should have some people go to the county. Planning meetings to see how we might be able to use some of the high school or middle school resources. Just a thought, I I don't want that to drop. Or maybe drop it, I don't care, but. Just an item.
So yeah, someone to interface with the county.
Right, so that maybe there can be a constructive use of some facilities over the next five years before we get something done on the branch.
Awesome, okay. Yeah, and we, yeah, we talked about that, haven't. Haven't answered that yet. And Kermit.
Okay, I I've got the three projects that are always out there and never making it into the center ring. And a part of it has to do with we we entered the meeting so quick, we we didn't really talk about the agenda and I didn't. Even remember, I thought it was on there for this meeting, anyway, I've got the three projects, the Burton Drive Walkway. And we need to really discuss the alternatives we have on that so we can and go to the county and frankly, let them pick one. Because we're not buying this whole thing, but the the second one is the. Santa, the walkway under the Santa Rosa Creek Bridge, which we need the county, which we need the county to go with us and address the. Altrans to do this, you know, either under this bridge or the the next one that arrives, one that arrives. And the other one is the walkways that we have, we have got four walkways that cross Highway one. And that I requested the county, and this is through the auspices of transportation in the. N C A C, but it's really has to do with Cambria. I'm out there doing this as Crusader Rabbit, far as everyone's concerned. And the C C S D has no connection with this and I need that. I need I need not to be just a lone wolf out there, now, it could be connected as we discuss this later in the day. Of ad hoc committees and goals, if that ties into it. So that but at least the county has to have some kind of a footprint or recognition in there, so I walk in there, it's not just me saying this. They're gonna want to know what what the. What the in in the N C A C has proved most of this, but then again, N C A C. Does not own property nor manage it, it all falls down on the footprint of the came or the C C S D. So I need C C S D recognition and, you know. And tacit approval to proceed rather than just off there by myself, when I start talking to the county about. You know, what are what our priorities are or not priorities, what the projects are. Because up to now, it's all it's all on me, so and if no one thinks it's a good idea, then I need to drop it. Instead of doing that, so this should be on our priority agenda list next time and I'll be talking to Lake Litzer or County. Road possibly road or Public Mercy Department by this time next meeting, or maybe not because of the Christmas season, it's taking up their time also. But we need to. But get a grips on this and start moving on it, and it's been it's hanging too long. And and we're just wasting time, so that's. That's what I need to do, this needs to go on the agenda next time, and I need, you know, if there's another thing in our discussions today, if you tie it to a committee. Or a ad hoc, whatever, that might suffice, but when you really look at the ramifications of of who's. Who's the approval, is this a public access function, some of it has to do with roads, when what's the agreement with the county roads and. Cambria, when they took on, they took on the roads as is, does that mean walkways along the the drives like frankly, it's a safety issue of pedestrians. Versus high traffic ways. And we're not trying to change all the walkways, just to kill people crossing Highway one and a few blocks away is the traffic, they're they're just high traffic arterials. And the. Other one is is so we've got that issue of who's who has the right to. And who do we have to pay for everything, or does the county, is it on the county bill? Or is it a shared concern or so forth, so all these things are going to be coming up and they're going to question that when I start. You know, pressing for a lot of these other things, you know, not as much as I can press, again, we're pressing. Okay, that's it.
Fantastic, yeah, I see that feeding into the goals, I I'd be surprised if we don't have goals established to. To address these these issues, that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, I guess not not judgmental or anything here, just thinking about what our purview is in terms of park recreation, open space. And I'm just wondering, is this the right? Standing committee to address those and could you get more support, say like in resources and infrastructure or something?
No, that's that's was another item I'd consider, because when you look at what what it is we do.
Right.
Are we responsible for every open space issue in the C C S D? Or is there something else that should be taken its place, is there, should this be an engineer project? Interfacing and I I agree with that, that's why we need to bring it up in the committee here and really find out, is this our bailiwick? Is this what we're assigned to do, because I wonder how when you, that's the other thing I'm going to do is the Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan some time ago. We're sort of ignoring it, but almost when you start getting into the park planning thing. And that's one issue, but then the rest of the open space planning, the the walkways, any trail system is outside this. And those are open space things according to the old plan, how much? Where do we want to start, and I'm going to suggest that we we start modification of the Parks Recreation Open Space and the. Actually, the Fiskly Ranch West is a chapter in the plan. And that we could chat, we could put a chapter every year to accomplish and redo the plan within five or six years.
So so in in that regard, I I did ask. Very soon after I got appointed as Chair of this committee, what is the scope? Is it? Broad in terms of? Doing whatever is needed to bring parks, recreation and open spaces to this community within the greater boundaries of this district? Or is it restricted to just the C C S D properties? And and if it were the latter, that would be very narrow, I had conversations with the Board President and with legal counsel. When you look at the. The Prose Master Plan, it's the broader goal and and I, you know, they affirmed that, you know, this committee does have that broader goal. Now. Is it advisory committee to the board? We can advise and the board has control over what's on the board's properties and so there's more control and influence there. And where? The needs of the community. Drive us to interface with other organizations. That is in our remit to do so, is to interface with organizations and work towards. Getting the needs of the community met and what you've identified are, in my opinion, three of the most critical needs. And so it's, you know, it is within this community's purview to work in that direction. And in that regard, it's it's less the C C S D taking action than working cooperatively with county, with other, you know, other entities. And, you know, back to Jim's point of. Getting connected with the county. So, and does that help?
It. It will when we get to it and slam it down and and really pinpoint what I go, you know, what those are, because if that's. If that is a rewrite of this or the separate goals and then among themselves, that's that's fine, but. We we sure have a lot of stuff in the bucket.
Good, Shannon, you wanted to comment on?
I just wanted to say that, you know, after reading the last code, it is absolutely within our purview.
Yes.
And definitely agree, though, that there's going to be have to some synergy with the county and with. With other agencies to to make this happen, but that that can come from us.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of what we need to get done will have to use the influence model rather than the control model.
She's had comments.
If I may reclaim my time, God, that's a lot of words for everybody to be using to explain the same things we've been talking about for a long time. Right, it's the corridors for moving people around, I don't care whose purview it is, I live in Cambria. I'm worried about a kid getting killed on Burton in front of the lodge and I've been worried about it for twenty years. Right, thank you Shannon for that, and as you see it right now as it sits. There's no walkway there because the lodge got them signs sitting in that way.
Yeah.
So we can go through the jurisdictional steps of whatever we're supposed to do, not going to get anything done. If we write a letter, if we go screaming and say, hey, that's the only way it's going to happen fast. But something's got to happen on that corridor, I don't know how we're going to get up and down the hill, but that one spot right now is really unsafe.
Yeah, all the way from Highway one to the.
And my kids don't use it anymore, so I don't care as much as I used to.
Yeah, until the grandkids study.
Well, then I got that.
Is it my turn?
Yeah, definitely.
I wanted to amend my report on the signage committee, because Kitty Connolly was also there, I forgot to say that. And also, one of the things that came out of that was that, and this is just for everyone's situational awareness, I know we don't need to decide anything now. We don't have a name for the community park, it is referenced in documents as various names. And so I think one of the things we need to do very high level, thirty thousand feet is name the community park, maybe with the public input, I think that'd be a great idea. So that's just something to maybe put on the agenda in the future, because I don't know if it's necessarily a goal, it's just something we gotta get done.
Yeah, it's part of. Part of that, okay. Anything else but move to public comments? Twenty, so public comment, who's? Who's who's got something for us? That's what's not on the agenda, so I think the interest isn't what's that is on the agenda, so let's move on.
I think there's a hand up.
There is a hand up now, okay. See it earlier, thank you, I'll allow her to talk, okay, Crosby or Laura?
Yes, it's Laura this morning, good morning Chair Thomas and the committee. I've got, actually, I have an agreement, I have a suggestion and I have an observation. The first thing is I totally, totally agree with Jim Barringer on joint use of the playing fields any way that we can. For the interim or for permanent use or whatever. We've been saying that for a while. Okay, my suggestion, and this is my suggestion. Okay, before changing the ranch management plan. You should confer with the California Coastal Conservancy. This agency supplied most of the financing for the ranch and has great control over its purpose and use. Last month, I believe Crosby sent out quite a few documents stating, these are documents from quite a while ago. But they're still in force of what their control is, so please talk to them before you start changing things around, because you're gonna make them more upset. Okay, and then this is a personal observation, okay, this year. We live here in Lodge Hill above Fern Canyon, et cetera, and we've had to take some really heroic measures against the invasion of deer. Okay, and what it looks like, this year we did so many extra lots, trimmed it back to dirt. And the habitat for the deer and the other animals has suffered, this is my observation and. They're just trying to survive, so I don't know what the answer is, but all these extra lots being trimmed back to dirt has ruined habitat. Thank you.
Points and Laura hands pull up, Crosby wanted, okay.
Are we revising the master plan?
But I had, I have not heard that we're.
Okay.
I just, I shouted it out, that was, yeah, yeah, Kermit mentioned the.
Community Park Plan, but that's. A lot, not on the agenda now. So consent agenda, we have the, we have the minutes from the last meeting. As.
Oh shucks. Time to get up.
That's the call, do we, do we have any questions or changes to the, to what's written in the minutes? And do we have a motion?
I move we approve the minutes, sorry.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Kermit. And so that. Morning.
I'm sorry to interrupt the meeting, I was just straight out in the library parking lot and we have a dog which definitely was looking for it.
Thanks so much. Thank you. All right. Okay, agenda, Jeff? Are your name? I mean, voting on the.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I. I have four eyes and Steve is. Who is dog and that's that's sufficient, so we'll count that as. Temporary, I think, yeah. Brings us to regular business, I should. Oh, hold on, we have a public comment from Julie. Julie, go ahead.
Good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm sorry I'm not on screen and I don't know if this is the most appropriate time to enter this comment, but I may not be able to stay on the whole call, so. I just want to bring to the attention, I'm sure many of you have already heard, Michael, thank you so much for your kind text yesterday afternoon. And I know, of course, our general manager is in attendance. But we got word, of course, yesterday in regards to the grant that we have been patiently waiting on for the skate park project. And I'm very proud to say that. Of over seventy nine applications and thirty six million dollars in funding with the state of California, we were one of sixteen projects selected. And of course, fully funded, meaning our match grant was meant or met, rather, an additional six hundred thousand dollars. So we have work to do and Matthew, of course, can bring you into some additional detail. But we're very, very proud of the accomplishment and getting this grant across the finish line and we'd like to, of course, say thank you to pros as well. As they've been with us through this journey, so. Big congratulations to the Skate Cambria team, to our champions in this community, for those in our community who believed in us. And of course, to C C S D and all of their assistance in regards to getting the grant application to the state. Thank you.
And may I add, Julie, a huge, as as one of the. Champion, champions, a huge kudos to you, Julie, so.
Thank you, and be looking for an article on behalf of Kathy Tanner and the Trib. I know that she had an opportunity to interview Matthew as well as myself, it's, I'm sure going to be, and knowing Kathy. A wonderful compliment to the project and to the grant, getting across that finish line, so again, thank you. Any questions in regards to the grant, because I'm also happy to answer as well as Matthew with him being in the room? No questions or make it easy?
When will the money come?
Yeah, so the the next phase of it is the federal review, so the National Park Service reviews it. I'm getting more details on what that process is, staff has to attend a workshop webinar. And then start completing, I'm sure, more more paperwork and processes and sending up a lot of what we did with the state, will be worked out with the federal government. I have an email out on that, so more to come. What I, what was alluded to from state parks is that we're in a really good position, that if you if you've made it this far. This is, this is the home stretch and so it's. Just tying up some loose ends is is basically the gist that I got, the the projects they move forward in terms of sixteen of them. Are funded by the available monies, so they didn't move forward projects that they don't have money for. So that thirty five point six million covers all sixteen projects that were moved forward to federal review. So it's my understanding that they're looking to fund these projects, we just have to tie it to a sense, so. And we're excited.
Good job, everybody.
Well, okay, let's move to agenda topic six. Sure.
So did we skip four?
Holy smokes, yeah, and. How did I, okay, yes, I got.
And we, yeah, and David also.
I did the consent agenda and thank you for, so the agenda topic three, thanks. Vice Chair, thank you. Boy. So, so yes, the Solids and Managers Report, Mr. Gary.
We've just been out there checking, double checking on some of the ranges, some of the trees and stuff like nature. The same thing with the homeless encampments. We've just been patrolling, it's been pretty quiet, it's hopefully it's calm before the storm. I mean, it's pretty, I mean, we're moving forward with, you know, our projects that we're doing. You know, we cleaned up Main Street, that was all ready to go, I've been talking to the Coastal Commission in regards of Santa Rosa Creek. Because there is quite a few areas that are full of debris, so I'm working out some maps for them to come down and look at, we're supposed to be planning here in January. Looking into coming down and then looking at the property all the way down to down on the other end of. We call it Highway one. Down there, because I know the whole Santa Rosa Creek Trail is pretty much shot there, so I'm looking for suggestions on it, so I'm working with them in the county. On that one there. But everything else, I mean, the guys have been out looking at a couple of different lots, looking for trees, especially with the last rain that came through on our lots. Driving through and just double checking, that's what we've been doing too. So that's about it.
And questions for comments for David?
I have a comment, I just read in the next door that the bottom forty is having a warming station. And so if we can refer the homeless maybe to the warming station in San Luis, I don't know if that's off limits. And so if we can refer the homeless maybe to the warming station in San Luis, I don't know if that's off limits.
Other comments, questions from the public? And yes, topic four, the intent of of this topic, just I'll, I'll put this on the screen because this is the first time we will have, we have this on the agenda. Actually, I don't have anything specific on that, just in the, in the main screen of the agenda. But, you know, the intent is, other groups and individuals from the community that you know, we have some interface with some involvement in open spaces, parks and recreation in in this area, have a chance to chime in, so. Kitty, you're on Zoom, did you want to, did you want to share?
Hi. I am
Yes, that it, yeah, I think I clicked right button, thank you.
A very long suspenseful pause there, but thank you, Haley, for fixing that. Yeah, we have a number of things going on. The bench on the Ridge Trail is a wooden bench, the one that's closest to the Huntington entrance. And although I find them very comfortable, they're very hard to maintain, so we're in the process of replacing that with a stone bench at FFRP's expense, but with David's cooperation. And hopefully moving the old bench to replace a worn-out other wooden bench, so that's going on. I want to thank David again for wood chips. We're putting, we the Trails Crew is putting wood chips on the trails in anticipation of more rains, and they've been working very hard on getting the the trails in shape for what we hope is going to be a rainy winter. The Sierra Club is coming out on the twelfth for an all-day workday, so we'll resume work on removing ice plant. I'm delighted with that. It's a personal goal to get rid of all that nasty ice plant. And David met with Walt Anderson and myself to talk about replacing trailhead signs. And upgrading them and making them all consistent and lovely. So thank you for that. I think we've hit on a design that we're pretty happy with. I would like, so this may be not the right form, but I'd love to set up a meeting with Matthew and David to talk about contracting for the linking boardwalk, because it's the county building permit is ready to be pulled. But I don't want to, but we need to coordinate how that's all going to be done. Mostly, though, we had our Songs of the Season fundraiser last weekend and open house last night, and the auction ended, and it was really, really wonderful experience for everyone who came out. It was the highest attendance we've ever had at Songs for the Season. It was really a blast, and I want to thank the community for supporting the organization. Now I look forward to next year's, but I'm also grateful it's twelve months from now. So thank you.
Questions, comments? Move on. So and Julie, did drop, drop out, she said she probably would, so. Friends of the Dog Park, Shelley. You have, you have something to share?
Well, the only thing I have, I was thinking I heard something about a draft. I have a draft for the three casinos that we'd like to put in on foundations with eighty day walkways. And I'd be happy to leave that. Anybody would like to see it, it's not especially done, but at least you have an idea of what we're hoping to do at the Dog Park.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, leave that with us, I think that, that feeds into the community park plan, ad hoc work, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Laura Crosby, source panda.
Uh, we do. And Laura and Crosby?
Yes, it's Laura again. Just a very, very brief report from the Forest Committee. We continue to stay engaged and inform on proper, healthy ways to manage our rare forest. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and I believe in the last Forest Committee meeting, Jeff Wilson and Shannon Sullivan, you both attended. Yeah, so thank you for that, that, that connection is great. I don't have Karen or anyone from Green Space. Haven't connected yet with all my, that one Conservancy. Keith is here with the the Ranch Reno. So Keith, did you have something to share?
Good morning, I don't really have anything to share, just here, seeing how things are going.
Fantastic.
Yep.
Yeah, nothing, I'll just share, in Keith's reply, he reminded me. Right, we've got a lot of space there, but it's, it's not open to the public.
Yeah, we all know, we know that very, very little.
Okay, now.
Can I ask a quick question? So I know Green Space has been on before. But the Land Conservancy, are we going to reach out? Have we reached out to them to invite them to this?
I, I sent an email, but it's and Daniel responded, thank you, we'll engage as appropriate. But I, but I haven't had a chance to call on the phone and have a chat.
And I would assume they have a regular monthly meeting. I'll go find it and start seeing if I can attend.
Okay.
So
Great.
Be nice to have them.
That helps.
Just to point order on that, if we're going to engage those people to have them come and efficiently get to the meeting and in and out, can we adjust the agenda maybe to shove that up, knowing that if they show up at our meeting, they're going to get in and out within the first fifteen, twenty minutes to hear them?
Yeah.
Because, mister, I'm happy he's here, and if he could have been out of here twenty minutes, he might show up at the next meeting too.
Thanks, Keith. Okay, I think that brings us to six A on the agenda. This I wanted to set up on set up on the screen if I can, and this this share, yeah. Reason I wanted to have this conversation is twofold, I mean most of what we do, we're going to, you know, find a critical to see grant funding. And you know, CCSD as, as our partner. We, you know, hearing comments from the last meeting in the space of, you know, how can we avoid, you know, CCSD being the ones to submit the contract and the sense that if a grant goes to CCSD, it'll just die there and, and and my gathering is that, that pretty accurately reflects the CCSD of the past. It doesn't feel to me like it reflects the CCSD of today, and so I'm just hoping to have a reset, have a chat. And so that's the reason I'd ask this on the agenda, about you.
Yeah, so thank you. So this is optimal timing considering we, we just got moved forward with the State Parks Grant and aren't in a good position to, to be funded for the skate park, so. Chair Thomas is, is alluding to is, yeah, we've had some historical background and perhaps not falling through with some of these grant opportunities. And so with the funds that have been kind of rolling out each year budget-wise, you know, we, we sprinkle in budget money for grant running services that we just never really have executed. And so what we have done is contract with, with the grant writer, and now we're meeting, going to be meeting with that grant writer in addition to our program manager, Griffin Reaper, and start targeting grants, and start actually using that grant money and start acquiring grants, and I think we're in a good position. I think this skate park grant is a huge win for the district. Skate Cambria has raised, I wish to, still launch, probably tells what they are now, where we are now, total fund wise. Kermit or?
No, six hundred, I think she said this morning.
Six hundred, okay. So with the matching six hundred, that's a one point two million dollar infrastructure project for the CCSD that for the CCSD side, we committed a hundred and seventy-eight, so that's a million dollars of infrastructure that, you know, we're bringing to the district, so. So I'm, I'm really excited to work with pros and, and other areas of the district that we can start hunting down and and start chipping away at some of these grant funds.
Well, now, this goes back to also the pocket for putting in money and the writing the check for, to, to obtain services. Are you willing, what projects are eligible for that sort of safe, safety pocket? We talked about using the CCC, Community Cambria Community Care Council, Council as the CCC bank, but for grant funds and so forth, not grant funds, but for donated funds. But you had talked about talking, and there was a bit, the ability for the CCSD to take money and fold it and write a check for it for various things. Now, is that a cumbersome issue? Is that, what would what's your limitations on that? Or do we just wait and find out?
So, so we don't have any limitations, so i- i- if, I've talked with District Council on this subject, not even, you know, relating to pros, but just in general, we've been working with CERT, and so CERT had some funds that they acquired through grants, and so what we're trying to do is you know, if the CCSD is funding projects or hunting for grants, then the CCSD should be holding the monies for those grants, and so it is as simple as creating a line item. Now, if there's donations from the Cambria Community Council or Skate Cambria, then we create a line item or anyone else. Or anyone else in the district, and it is earmarked for those funds, unless not stated. So if it's just a general donation, then the district can sprinkle those funds where, where they seem fit, but if there are funds that are acquired by private entities, the council, or, or private citizens, and they want to donate towards a specific fund, they say that, and then we would create a line item for that.
Yeah, sure.
So I, I'm super glad about the, the grant writer, I mean, that's great, and obviously, going after grants is what we need to be doing as far as this committee is concerned. I do wish we were having a discussion about pros budget. Because that is a topic we've brought up many, many, many times, and never gotten any real answers about that. Do we have a budget? Do we have a yearly budget? You know, I went and read all the LAFCO documents, and it clearly states that pros is a division of CCSD named five. And we are one of them, and so as such, we are eligible for county monies. And again, don't, I don't understand, I totally know that I don't understand it. But I would like CCSD to come and explain it to us.
Okay, so, I don't know about the county. You have to elaborate on the county monies part, or we can get together and talk about that in terms of what monies the county
Do we get money for, does CCSD get money from property taxes?
So we, we get money from property taxes, and so the Parks and Rec budget gets about, what was it, one point five percent, I think is what is allocated towards parks and open spaces.
Okay.
But I have to be about as candid as candid can be. Pros, FNR does not have money. I mean, they are in a structural deficit every single year, and there is no budget to, for things outside of overhead. And, and we're pulling from other areas in the district just to float an already strained department.
Okay, and that's understood, I know that FNR requires money. But pros, that, I, I'm super confused too, because the way that LAFCO identifies us, pros is the, the umbrella division. And so I just want to understand what we're getting from the county. And where it goes, I know where it goes, I know it goes to facility and resources. But how we can ask the county for more, can we ask the county for more? What can we do to provide a budget for pros?
So, so maybe there's confusion, so, so we get property taxes, and then the district decides what percentage of those property taxes are divided up against those various departments, not really the county, the county doesn't say, here's one point five percent for pros. County says, here's your property tax allocation, that's a board decision, a board decision, and then the board divides up those essentially the, the breakdown. Because I think we're hovering, and I wish Denise here could answer it better for me, but seventy-seven percent is going towards fire and, and emergency services, and then we've got this amount going to admin, and this going to the umbrella, parks, recreation, open space, and FNR. That allocation is dictated by the board. And currently, with the existing allocation, we're still struggling to support.
So nothing is going to pros? And when we, when I look at the emblem, and this is a communication to me as general public, when I look at our emblem, facility and resources listed, pros listed as two different departments or divisions. So FNR has a budget, pros does not.
One point five percent.
So then what is our pros one point five percent?
Just we pause and, and check back on what this agenda topic is, to understand CCSD grant policies and processes. An important issue you're ringing up, but we're drifting out of bounds.
I agree, I just want to understand it, whether or not we have a budget, what we can do to get a budget.
So future agenda. Yeah, I support where Shannon's going, I think, and I believe particularly as we enter into our next agenda item here and thinking about how we're going to fund the things that we're going to do in the coming year and years ahead. We should really know from a budgeting standpoint and a planning standpoint what we have available to us. And what we're going to need to supplement with either grants or other fundraising or other sources of income on a line item by line item basis in our annual plan. And so
Well, that's a clue that maybe we should look forward to that topic.
Well, I, you know, I'm not, I, I'm just saying, I think, we, we should, I agree, we should have a much clearer understanding in here of what our funding is going to look like.
Yes, agree.
Right, and stabilize it as best we can. And if there's an opportunity, so I, I mean to labor it.
We, we will discuss that in a moment.
In topic, you, okay, fair enough then.
And if it's a thousand bucks, it's a thousand bucks, at least we could like buy a picnic table every year or something, you know?
Got it, got it, but let's, let's, all right.
I can answer that in the next agenda topic, and try to provide more clarity. It's bleak.
One thing that we didn't hear, on, on, on the grants, you're, you've hired, you've contracted with a a grant consultant, what's the opportunity for, for this committee to engage to, you know, with that consultant? How's that going to work?
Well I would probably shield that consultant from this group in terms of engaging them because it chews up our very small amount of money that we have for him to actually work on the grant fees. I think it would be good if we worked with David, myself, even Haley, Denise. If you have specific grants that you're, that you're looking for, or you, that you've earmarked, like, hey, this would be a good fit for the CCSD. And then we can start working with our program manager and with the grant writer to start, to start working on applying for those. And they're very good at what we potentially could acquire and couldn't acquire in terms of grants, in terms of what what our outlook looks like. I talked with quite a few grant writers. And when you look at CCSD as a whole, a lot of these state and federal grants look at economically disadvantaged communities. They just don't seem to fall into that umbrella very well, when we talk about medium income and things of that nature, so we'd have to be creative in terms of how we frame our applications and things of that nature.
Use school district data.
Yeah, I talked to Julie about that yesterday. Yeah. But sometimes those grants are very specific on where you pull your data from. You know, for the skate park grant, they had us go specifically to this one area, or from this report, this report, this report, and submit that.
Just an off-the-ball comment, nothing to do with Uh just an off the ball comment, nothing to do with, but for making money, uh I remember when we have the sprint charter thing came up about six years ago. And every ten years they renew the contract. And they took, uh they had the choice of keeping ten percent for. Uh the city or for the pros or not pros, but for the CCSD to use in general projects. And they decided it better to give most of that back to the public so the bills weren't so high on the um on the internet. Why don't we take that full ten percent or whatever, officially a full ten percent and give it to the F and R uh fund. As a way to generate money for the parks.
That's the first I've ever heard.
Yeah, it's coming up again another four or five years, but you know, I think it's, it was a long time ago. Every ten years they renew it and it'll be back up again. So. I would grab that money rather than just, you know, use it to.
You said internet, but you said sprint, so.
It's it's sprint and charter. The they have a monopoly. They pay the community ten percent of of something of every. Whatever years and um. Yeah, but it goes into the, obviously, the citizens pay it. But why not grab that money that we said, since we could have it? And give it to the, that way we is is in lieu of a a tax uh parcel.
It it kind of reminds me about five years ago, somebody, I think it was Amanda Rice, brought up the fact that we could. We could get a. An authority, just like we have an authority for streetlights, would get an authority for um the internet coming into town.
That's that's it.
A lot, a lot like the the garbage has a. We get money from the garbage franchise. So a franchise fee for the internet. And I don't know, it just kind of fell on the ground, but maybe you can check Laughco or something to see if.
That is what I'm, that is what I'm talking about. That same piece, in my group.
Anyone from the public have questions for the drill manager on?
Plenty of questions about that budget, I imagine.
And and what I'm gathering is, so we'll establish goals. We'll we'll get to this question of. Oh, on earth, are we gonna get the funds to do this? And we are, the more clearly we articulate those goals. Here's what we want to do. Feed those to Mr. Gary, then uh David Gary will be the interface with the grant writer. To say, here's what we want to accomplish. Where can we get grants to accomplish this? Yeah, that will be his job to chase.
Yeah, and 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 we'll have to do it in a phase approach. Again, we only have thirteen thousand dollars in the budget. So, you know, i- if if we've got several grants that are on the table. That we're really trying to target, we really think we have a good shot at, then, you know, perhaps we're going back to the board for a budget adjustment. Or as we head into the next next budget cycle, all right, now we want to budget thirty thousand dollars for grant writing services. Um I think pros is in a great position. And I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I'm really excited about the skate park. I mean, we have a million dollar. One point two million dollar parks, recreation, open space. Infrastructure item that could be coming to us, you know, so that's a big win for for pros, you know, for skate Cambria. And so. I think if there's other things like that that we can start working on, then. We're we're gonna be in good position.
Okay, let's uh. Let's move to um uh you know, the the meat and potatoes of this uh this agenda uh. The establishing, you know, the goals of uh what this committee wants to accomplish over the next uh for the next year. Uh and. But over the next year, I don't want to constrain our thoughts to short term uh, because we know. Uh great things take time, but you know, focus on what do we aim, what do we want to accomplish over over the coming year. And this is, this will drive our agenda. And as I see it, what we put on our agenda is gonna come from three places. These goals that we established. And the particle about how we approach and how we achieve those and every agenda, we need to to track and move that forward. Um specific requests come from the CCSD board requesting the pros committee to address a topic. Uh within our our scope, obviously, we'll work on that. And no doubt, other things will come up during. Now, you know, during our discussions that we hadn't thought of in the goals uh. Uh so other things will feed in as we as we see it. But. The goals, I think, would be our primary as I think through the next. You know, not just the next agenda, but the whole year ahead. Uh how are we gonna achieve these?
I have three goals. And they happen to be a Burton Drive pedestrian access. Bridge or crosswet or Santa Rosa Creek and walkway, walkable walkways across. The um four major points.
Yeah. So uh yeah, let me just describe how I want to, how I want to, you know, do this and. My thought is, and I I I put a couple of things that I think may be obvious, maybe goals that we want to have on the list. Uh if not, you'll let me know. Um but but what, but what I want is, and and I hope. You know, you know, the owl picks this up. Um. Uh but, you know, what I want to do is just. You've probably thought of this, thought of this already, but you know, what goals each of you have. That you you want to see us accomplish. And in terms of what a goal is, you know, the, you know, what level of detail, right? Um it's either essentially deliverables that we bring to the CCSD board for their decisions. You know, AKA community park plan that then. You know, goes into the funding, because once the board has approved something, then the budget process begins and. And and back to whatever these projects are, how they get funded um. As as they get, you know, better defined, they'll either get funded by. You know, general funds from the budget, the board can choose to um to designate funds for specific projects. Um and that's something that has been done, right? We saw, was it last year or the year before, the, you know, the board allocated. Some, was it a hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars, I believe was the number, to uh the Cambria Skate Park. And. There's no reason to think that won't happen again with the right, if you know, if the right case is made. And at the same time, um. We know that the more well-defined each of these projects are, the better our chances are at at winning grants. Um that's why we won this grant, the skate park. It was so well put together. And so. Whatever our goals are, we approach it that way. So um. I kind of appreciate what Julie said a few months ago, when she said the money is never the problem. And I, oh, it's always the problem. Right? It's always a problem. But, you know, figure out what we want to do, and then let's work to find a way to get there. So this is a stage where. Um let's just focus on what we want to accomplish. Don't constrain yourself by, well. The details of how getting the funds is gonna work, um let's be aspirational. And so with that. Um I just want, I'll I'll go around the room with the uh committee members and. Uh you know, Justin's, you know, left to right, dealing cards. I'll just want to go around the table this way and, you know, one at a time, you know, and. Before we do, I just a small one, upper, your small line and 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 the, and and these. Yeah, I just threw up here, updated East Ranch community partner, like they currently to the community. Based on what I've heard, I think that's one of our goals. But when we get to the the voting, you'll you'll let me know if that's right. A safe highway one crossing between the east and west ranch trails. Um I think we've heard about Sherman mentioned this, and this is. This is how I interpret it. I could be wrong, so reword that if, when when we get to it. Safe pedestrian pathway between middle school and East Village, you know, kind of. To me, I think this is the level at which we want to work on goals, but whatever ideas you have, let's throw them up here and see what sticks. So um as like, as we go around the room, kind of one at a time. So Jeff, do you have?
Okay, um but just, we just one or?
Your whole magazine, just give us, give us one. Around until we're.
Okay, um I'd like to see a, and I think it relates to that, to the book is a really good. Inventory of our open space. And at least a start of prioritizing what we plan to do. Some of those open spaces. We have a much clearer vision for what we want to do.
And you mean the CCSD owned open space?
Yes, right. That clear enough?
Uh yeah, inventory open space owned by the CCSD.
And then have a start to. Identifying uses. Or non-use.
Yeah, yeah, in a lot of cases, you know, that maybe.
Yeah, right, yeah. You know, just sort of, are there motivation issues? Are there, you know, forest management issues, et cetera, et cetera, okay?
Not much of a goal setter, especially if we're trying to accomplish it this year, which we're saying this is the goals for this year.
And and I want to be broader.
These are things we want to do before we die with all those.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
The thing I'm trying to do this year now is not screw up the grant we've been awarded.
Protection of the uh making this the the skate park construction a priority.
Just because we've been awarded the grant does not mean that someday a kid is gonna be skateboarding there yet.
Yeah.
And we're this far down the road and I want to make sure that we get there.
That I don't screw it up.
Well, I I want to help you. I want to be there with you, right? If there's some place we gotta go for one more meeting that we gotta shine, do a little dance, I'll go do a little dance because. We're down the road and I'm with that, right? A lot of times they ask us to go do dances and then we don't get anything. You know, like, I'm tired of doing it. But we're here now and let's get it.
Yeah, and I mean, I mean, yeah, and we can translate that into the positive side as. Meet meet the requirements, meet the requirements of, yes.
Yeah, uh. No, talk, talk is cheap. But I have some credibility. That grant was very close to falling apart. Um when I, when I came here with some of the things that needed to be accomplished. If in a certain amount of time, by June first, when we submitted it. And so we turned up the heat as um management, staff, and we we got it in it, but. Literally, the eleven, twelfth hour, um we got it in. So now that we're there, I've been in regular communication. So if it makes you feel better. Um nobody had met with State Parks when we were working on this grant um to really get all the minutia. But we had weekly meetings with Christine, who was the State Parks representative. She's now been promoted. She called me personally yesterday, since she was super excited for us, that their department and agency was lobbying and and really. Essentially praying for us to to move this project forward. We're gonna be on her hip, um so to speak, for for the rest of the way. I haven't know out on the next steps that the federal government will start to look at, what that entails besides. The overarching, you know, webinars and and things that nature. So uh we won't let this fall by the wayside, for sure.
Yeah, that's important.
Yeah, no, I, and I wasn't implying that anybody was gonna, just sometimes change of leadership and different things and, you know. Well, that I'm a pessimist just by nature, so.
Are they replacing me already?
Well, you 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 put.
Well, we kind of have seen different components to the whole thing.
Money isn't important. And I think earlier on, the the discussion was, uh. You know, why is the CCC holding the funds? Because people trust the CCC. And 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 so when people are putting in funds, they're they're gonna trust it more than they will uh the district. Uh but I think, and what the little things that we need to do is for the East Ranch that we've been talking about for a long time. As far as hiking trails and uh and uh disc golf or whatever, that we actually accomplished something this year. Because money is not an object for any of those things. There's there's money already contributed to one. So let's do something. Regarding the plans that we.
Do something on.
That we had from all of this year. And. On the East Ranch that. So that this, in fact, this summer, we can have some activity that we've actually did something for.
But we can't because of the bathrooms. Stupid bathrooms.
The dog parks there with a porta potty. Has anybody ever gone and so can we put in three porta potties and that? And then while the bathroom being constructed? The county approached well. I know you've gone to the very top, but.
Right, but. The goal is to. That's split up deleted, get something done on the. Fair enough.
Okay, um I would modify that one safe highway crossing. Well, that's actually the way it's written in the plan. They 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 were going to go overhead on bridge, they were gonna do a lighted crossing.
Uh I don't care how to do it.
Yeah, that's that's essentially it. Don't care how we do it. Just get safe, safe crossing is a good statement.
Or there's a light or whatever, however we get it done. A a way for humans and and their dogs and their bikes to get across the highway safely.
Yes. And then the safe pedestrian path between middle school and East Village, it's it's really not only middle school. Um but it's also the housing. Uh so essentially, it's at Eaton. Uh and Burton Drive intersection and middle school, two connections to the top. Because it's got a, it it does drain the neighborhood to the north or to the, to the south. Uh of of that intersection for people to go down and otherwise you'll.
So you know what you would rather say, between the Eaton Drive.
Yeah.
Burton intersection.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh but that that takes care of a lot of people coming down as well as the uh. Uh people through the south across the ways and everything that uh. Uh in in the low-cost housing.
So between the Burton Drive, Eaton intersection and East Village.
Yes.
And the first ones were kind of okay, right?
Yeah. And the other one, but the next one is just the safe walkways on the major inner, four major intersections. Uh from the highway one crossing for at least, you know, um. The next major intersection of of roads, safe pedestrian access off off. Off the roads and uh. Cause all those cars turning have a tendency to. You know, some of them don't know where they're going. They're just turning their, reading directions to their Airbnb.
So. So safe pedestrian, uh safe crossings for pedestrians.
Safe or safe uh access along the, you want the four streets or?
Close enough.
Uh yeah, at at four, at four, yeah, just not at the four, but at four. Because there's, the fifth one is the Cambria Drive, which has a streetlight and a a paved highway, ba- paved walkway.
Okay.
So it's Windsor is the one without the uh, the Wayman is the one without the the streetlight. But needs the uh. You know, a six-foot.
And also, you mean the Burton, right?
Burton Burton is good, is stands alone. Yeah, Burton is included in that.
Okay.
But and it could make it all the way to Eaton because uh beside the lodge, they have, you know, a good area. They just need to raise. You know, it's just a a crown of gravel, so some possibly some more striking apartment.
They're obviously cousins.
Yeah.
What else? Uh Shannon?
Um. I, the only thing I might add is, uh. Piney Way, Piney Way is coming down from that.
Oh, there.
To. To the East Ranch. We gave up for some reason that. Access and I would like to somehow explore getting it back.
Uh huh.
Don't know why we gave up that.
So the Piney Way access, yeah.
To the East Ranch, yeah. That was a very, that is the safest way for me on Launch Hill to get down to the East Ranch. And I don't know why we gave up that. But then the only other thing I would add is just wordsmithing things.
Right.
Um, because I would say instead of updated East Branch Community Park, I would say new. I don't want to update the old one, we want to replace it with a new.
Hmm, I don't want to take the word out, East Ranch Community Park Plan that does reflect.
Okay, sure.
Yeah. Yeah. It'll update. Does have a, yeah.
And then Kermit, I just would argue with you that adding that middle school. Um. Is so vital to this because I think that's where all the.
Oh, I don't, I don't care if it, I don't care if it's in there as long as we get the, the, it should be in there.
Yeah.
Uh.
So middle school.
But I don't, I don't want to leave out, yeah, middle school round.
Yeah.
There, there is a safe.
There's so much money and safe passage for school, yeah.
There's money there.
We don't care where it goes, but.
Money, there's money for safe passage to school. Um, that's another round.
Yeah.
Good point, random, yeah, another one. Can I get one and a half here and a half will be really quick?
Sure, and by the way, for the public, you know, like, uh, the process, I think I put this in the agenda, but the intent is we go around till we run out of gas with, with the committee and then we'll go to the public, anything else that you want to add.
Uh, so on the East Ranch, can we? Can we be more proactive there? And aggressive and say, like, fully approved? Is that real, I mean, so it's not just a plan, but approved by the board, well.
Approved by.
Approved, permitted, I know it gets complicated and it may go beyond twenty twenty four, you know, it just feels to me like, well, if we just do the plan, how many community plans have we had, right?
That is correct.
And if we say, you know, but we're not just gonna accept putting another plan together, we're gonna get it approved. And I don't know if shoveling the ground or anything is, is feasible, but something more aggressive.
Yeah, I like approved.
About that, so that's my half, the other is, um. Is, um. Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll pass, it's all right.
Come back, come back.
Yeah, I'll pass, it's not. It's probably not worthy.
Yeah, no, I'm good.
Jim?
Um, boy, I had something there, um.
We can come back.
Yeah, I'm still. Thinking we, we should have a goal of working with the county.
Yeah.
On the county and school facilities, shared use, I.
So that's a means to some, to achieve some goal.
Uh, I would suggest that, you know, I know a little bit what you, I think I know a little bit what you're thinking, but what I would say between the schools and so forth is the ninety-four plan does have. Uh, maps of trails connecting all the way up to the uh, uh, state uh camping area. Into uh across Coverdale land naturally and private and coming down the Bridge Street access and all the way in a, a plan for a, a trail. Uh, over to the high school, um, and uh. Connect, to connect to the existing park we have, and then. Several others, we, we have the coastal thing, but we need to be always. In, in chasing those long, mapping and chasing those long-term plans and, and they're, they're lost in this little. The Cambria Plan, but again, I would pick parts out of this that we want to revive, but even though we don't have a good way for any of these things, we won't just pay much attention to it, don't, don't have time for a while. That ought to be one of our major goals to keep pursuing the drawn line, Shannon.
I know.
In the, uh.
Yeah.
Uh. So I, I would say. Uh, update and continue the planning for the uh. Uh. Connecting, uh.
You mean, you.
Multi-purpose.
Like, like point to point.
Yeah, point to point, point to point and start looking at land.
But what, which points?
What's that?
Which points, uh, boil that down.
Um, I would say.
Where to where?
We want to go north to the. Um, uh. State, uh. Uh. Campgrounds or big campgrounds to uh. San Simian Campgrounds.
Like what Kayakas just did, in other words.
Yes, and we want to go south.
Connecting trail.
Yes.
All the way through.
The coast, the coast committee trail, coast trail.
Uh huh.
Uh, was, is one, but we, we want to go north as well to the San Simian Campgrounds and we want to go to Coast Union High School, uh, and we want to, uh. You know, I'd like to go to Scotts Rock myself and there are a number of, of walkways that people have talked about.
Hmm.
And are possible, but again, they cross private ramp, but again, it's no one has asked and no one is pursuing it. And we need to start preserving.
So from. Basically, state parks, uh, San Simian on the north.
Yes.
To where in the south.
Uh. Why not Kayakas?
Yeah.
Cambria to Kayakas, it's amazing.
Uh, coastal trail, uh. As, as far as we can get the bloody thing to go, I just leave coastal trail.
Yeah, there are, and bicycle trails, these are the multi-purpose bicycle trails as well, pedestrian trails, and uh, they're major. Major walkways.
Yeah.
And we need to start, because we, you know, and we.
Wow.
Uh, we just need people to start. Think of the. There is money for.
So now we go. Um. All right, um. So. Forget about going single file, anybody have anything else?
Um, just a comment, um. Shovel ready projects are always. Important because when grant writers go out, if it's not shovel ready, uh, you're, you're, you're considered very easily. And uh, I mean, just a comment on finding it anyway. Uh, uh, my understanding is that somebody bought some property on a tax lien and kept us from.
Yes.
Crossing that, we tried our best to get that landowner to allow an emergency access. Uh, even fuses, uh, maybe, um. Eminent domain might have to be done to keep an emergency exit for the park. Uh, it's just a comment, I say, keep it on, keep it on the, on the uh. On their goals, but it's not going to be simple.
We have a, a water line or sewer line easement, don't we?
The easement can be walked around only by the C C S D to inspect that particular thing, that, that's easement, but there's no. He ma- he specifically made it difficult for a car to get there. We can walk in there, but he made it so you can't drive a car.
That won't be easy.
And, and, but, yeah, doesn't mean it shouldn't be a goal. And there's another one that comes out of Wilton Drive that was, is on the sewer that the guy picked up as a tax lien, that's the, the tax lien one, the other one is an inheritance and they're. You know, a gift from somebody that, um, took the. Private road and closed it. Yeah. And, but they took private, public land to close that too. Anyway.
So can I ask a question about the goals?
Yeah.
So our, our goal and the other team's goal is that we create a list of things that we want to tackle in two thousand twenty-four, thereabouts.
Well said.
Um. And we're going to prioritize these goals.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's.
So the more concrete that we can define these, the better.
Yeah.
Then we'll be able to try and meet these.
Yeah. And, uh, we prioritize, we decide which ones rise to the top, um. Even those at the bottom, we, we may put energy into, but those that rise to the top will put the most energy into and. Uh, will identify, okay, who's going to sponsor each of these goals, uh, like on the committee, like, uh, so a volunteer to say. I'm. I'm the trail guide on that one, I'm taking the, I'm taking the point, uh, that's, that's, that's coming, but, um, but before we get there. Uh. Are there any more from the committee, um? I'm going to open this up to public, um, those on Zoom, get your hands, um. Uh, Gary, Shelly, you're here, oh, uh, do you have anything?
I, I got one more, how about making us go to the, uh, County Parks and Rec meeting every month?
Yeah. Oh, like, that's a good goal.
Yep. That's something we could all do, and then when you don't do it, we could all say, oh, you didn't do your goal. That's why, because a lot of these things, we're going to be able to, oh, we didn't do anything, couldn't do that, we thought about it, told our friends, nothing.
There.
You didn't go to the meeting, no, you didn't, Kermit, I don't care if you were on vacation, that was your responsibility.
Should have had you do it, but I.
Yeah, right, and then you trade them off, good.
Yep, no, I, I agree, because there's stuff happening we don't know about.
That's an activity, that's an activity. Um, that we can do, yeah, and, um.
Right, even if we send Shelley one month, if we make a concerted effort to give, right, that's still, I am here from parts of back, I'm the dog park lady, boom.
So.
It's going in January.
It could be a goal, attendance at the meeting.
Yeah, and it's tough, we got to realize those meetings don't happen all the time too, and so you got to kind of stay on it. But I mean, if you sent it out, and especially you, Michael, as the board president, if you shot the thing to their people and said, hey, is the meeting on? Cause they literally do not have a way to notify you when the meeting is canceled. The computer at the county won't allow them to do it, just the board members get notified.
Interesting.
I know, I tried, I said, hey, can you just tell me when it gets canceled, they're like, well, we don't really have that process.
The county parks and rec committee.
Yeah.
Right?
Kind of like, like, like the pros, it's unofficial.
Yeah.
It's an advisory. Board.
That's the one you're talking about. Dias, yeah.
Or they're doing.
Uh. Um, so. Here's how I, I, I worked that, see if it flies, you know? And I think what you're trying to accomplish is connection and increased influence with the county.
Yes, true.
Go by. Um, attend the county parks and rec, um, and there'll be several.
There'll be several.
By, you know, things that we'll do. Yeah, no, that's. That's what I deal is bubbling and you. Really put that in terms of saying.
Our goal is to wear the county out.
Right?
They could, yes, they could help us with the road thing, maybe, you know.
Negotiation book by, you know, Williams and Yuri, getting to yes, you know, we need to get to yes. Uh huh. All right, what else?
I have another goal, uh.
Yes.
Uh, pave the, um.
Yeah.
County road into the dog, or into the.
Or make them take responsibility for maintaining the road to the counties, to the, our community park.
Yeah.
Cause that is.
Yeah, with rodeo drive.
Yes.
Drive. Even Gibson would say they don't have the money, but it doesn't mean you can't stop bugging them, you know?
Yeah.
You don't have any money.
Right, yeah, we've been talking about this, yeah, this has got to be paved rodeo drive to the community park. Uh, I love that. Um, and I'm looking on, uh, Jerry, it looks like you had one?
Yeah, yeah. I have, uh, lost track of, uh, the Christmas market, Kermit. But, um, when I was on the N C A C, I tried to, uh, get, uh, it included the, uh, paving. Uh, it really offends me when I walk along Burton and see that the signs are not right way for pedestrians. And I would like you to get involved with the N C A C and the Land Use Committee in regard to, uh, making it a condition of this permit. That, um, part of, uh, Burton Drive outside is probably be paved.
Good, good point. And they are going, they're willing to participate in that, in the A walkway.
As I'm just saying.
That might, that might be a.
It's one of your goals, so.
Yep.
That is a way into getting somebody else to pay for it.
Yes.
So Burton Drive is paved, you're talking about.
I talk about the walkway in front of the lodge.
Gardwell, is that the gardwell?
Oh, in front of the lodge itself.
In front of the lodge itself. Every time I drive down there, you see the signs, no pedestrian walkway. They can't do that, it's the right way and you should be able to walk, walk down it.
Yeah.
But the simple solution is for them to pay, so that's to be paid, his excuse was there was a dip there and so he couldn't pay that, and he can fill that and make a walkway.
I bet he could. The, the biggest thing is, is the fact that it, he is correct, it's unsafe.
No.
And. Therefore, we need to correct that.
Exactly.
Especially if we.
He needs to correct.
Well, we need to, uh. Inform it, it is a county road and he can't close county roads and the county can tell him anything they want. They probably do.
So let's, let's see if I got that right, uh, so paved pedestrian walkway on Burton Drive, uh, by the Cambria Pines Lodge, you know, in all seasons.
And that fits, that fits the safe crossing for pedestrians and for, because that was aimed as that type of correction from there to Eaton. But the state.
No, this is, this is odd, uh, cause this one is from Eaton Drive going down, but this is.
No, but the safe crossings for pedestrians and for highway crossings.
That's how we want.
That's not only the crossings, but a reasonable distance out from the highway, so that, that would fit with that, because that's where that was intended.
Yeah, it connects, but it's.
It was, they're, they're associated.
Yeah, they're associated, but I'm.
Doing, associated over here, but.
Well, well, they're not subsets of one another.
They are, they are saying the same project. You know, when they, when they correct.
Count, purely with, with the county.
Yes. Well.
Working with.
That's the county right away, he can't do it without county permission.
I heard somebody other than the county in this conversation.
It, it.
I don't think it's a subset.
We don't care, if we don't care if the county writes them a letter. Or who does what.
Well, I'll, I'll put it close there, but I, I don't see, is it a subset of those words and vice versa?
It's intended to be.
Okay.
With how far out I, I get is another question, but that is an easy one because it's really. Fairly easy to get to the, uh, to the lodge, it's past the lodge that is the problem, and if we're going to put a walkway on the lodge or from Burton. And Eaton down, that's part of that walkway system.
Uh huh. He's right, it would be fun only from the lodge or from the junior high to that trail.
Yes, because the junior high people walk on that Burton Drive, and that's a safety issue.
Uh huh.
So they go together, so, and whether or not we want us to address it separately, but that's.
Well, not that I, I've talked with Bram and Dirk on this particular project over the years, I'm pretty sure, Tony, not that I want to overspeak, that that is county property.
It is county property.
Dirk, Dirk cannot do a project on county project, but he is willing to pay, they want it too, because it's going to behoove their property.
It is correct.
You, you're right, but he refused when it was brought up as part of the permit for Christmas market. He made excuses to say it was not practical, so he's talking out of both sides of his mouth.
Well. You're right, and, but we need the county to address it.
Yeah, because the county would have to tell him what it is that he.
To what standards?
Yeah, right, anyway, anyway, I don't want to belabor that point there, but that is an important piece of the overall.
Yes.
Yes.
Part that we're talking about, and, uh, isn't part of the permitting for the, uh, Christmas market for him to put those things there?
No.
That's where I feel like there's two different sides of the county talking at each other.
That's why he has two different sides, he doesn't want to delay anything. He's willing to do it, as you know.
Uh huh.
But he doesn't want to all of a sudden get into a study and that.
Yeah.
Having this, I don't know. He doesn't want, yeah, he doesn't want anything tied to the Christmas market, because he's got enough.
Right.
What you want to. Yeah.
Any other goals?
Everybody loves.
I feel like, we're starting, the clue is, they're starting to work one of the goals that maybe we're done, uh, from, uh. You know, one, one last call from the public on Zoom, anyone have?
Last call from the public.
Yeah, have any, uh, to add, our next step is we're going to prioritize these.
Friend you have today?
Okay, so what I'm. All right, I'm gonna put on the screen, uh, this is in your agenda packet, but I think it's important enough that we. We looked at what we said in terms of how are we going to prioritize these? And. Um. Here is. Yeah, and. Obviously, whatever you find important. That's how you're going to prioritize things, but we're going to ask you to think about, yeah. How does? How will each of these affect the community, you know, those, you know, people who live here, visitors, underserved, you know, every, you know, all, all angles. Um, how does it benefit the environment? The feasibility, and by this, um, it doesn't have to be easy, but, you know, if it essentially, you know, but is there a way we can get there, right? Um, if I were to say, you know, shucks, uh, let's, let's build a water park, uh, amusement, water amusement park on Disco Hymn Ranch, on the West Ranch, um.
Hasn't somebody already proposed that?
Yeah. Not feasible, I'm just, you know. The stupidest idea. And, and support, what do we, what's our sense of, it would be broadly supported uh, for the community and have the energy to push it forward by sponsorship, I mean, someone here has got energy, like, the energy that, that Kermit has about these pedestrian pathways, I mean, that is, that, that's a goldmine, and that's what we're looking for. So, with that. Um, I'm gonna give you each a pack of these stickers, and these are not, you know, color coded to match your personality or anything, but they're all, they're all different colors. And, there we go, and it's like, well, why'd you give me seven of these? I thought, well, and the, the rules are. Yeah, if there's only one, but all seven on one, right? You, you, uh, and put them on the left, and you, um, you put them where you see, um, your your priorities based on those factors, and if you will, just put them over here on the left. You know, but, and it, it'll, it'll come obvious pretty quickly. These up here, so, or just put them to the left of each posted note.
If we support it, or if we.
If you view it as one of your priorities.
Okay.
Whatever, Jim, not everybody's paying attention.
I agree, I agree. Yeah.
No, go for us, Jim.
Anything, right, oh, that's all. All the incomes are.
See, I don't think we got to this one. One of, all the connected, pay attention to all the connected trails. Is that, because you. No, no, I don't see, I'm gonna put, can I revise the thing?
No revoting. An updated trails plan.
I want the acid trails plan for us.
Yeah.
Updated trails plan from the, update the master plan, the current master plan, connecting trails plan. Well, that's a brilliant idea.
Right, from the, uh, the original pros master plan. That's not a good idea. So this would be. This would be a step towards that.
That's like the trail would be.
Wouldn't just be important. Yeah, okay. So. We're, uh, we're out of stickers, this tells us, we've got. One, two, three, probably. Ah, okay.
Should've done that.
Yeah, um.
Well, one of the most important ones was, didn't get anything, I'm moving so far, this. This one's very important.
I feel like that was a big one that we could tackle after we tackled some other thing.
Well, see, but we don't have to do. Some of this stuff is paid a long time, and it'd be better just to get it moving rather than wait next year. And more of those stickers.
Right, so, so, so this is, you know, Kermit saying, put it there, okay.
Yeah, got it. You know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have A dot, it's Caltrans. Um, jump and say, gee, this is a good idea over here, they're gonna wanna explore that, they have to do their own planning, and they'll come back to us. So it's gonna take years for this thing to kind of cook through, but it's, we have to address it with the county, and it's a separate step. It doesn't necessarily go with any of the other trails, because it's a separate, uh, issue by itself that just needs pushing. And it's a one, I can do it by myself, you know, I just with, you know, casual. With everyone's authority to do so, but I can't do it without everyone's statement, or this is a priority or. It doesn't go under plan, we can't do it.
Well, in terms of pushing things forward, we've already got an ad hoc committee in progress. So, um. Yeah, these, uh, are, how do we, yeah, what, what do we wanna do?
You can put them all in one goal if you wanted to. I'm willing to push them all together, or make them separate, because maybe some of them will fall out.
Yeah, this, this one clearly, um, stands by itself. This one stands by itself. Likewise, you know?
Well, that one, skate park and skate park, those two kind of the same.
Yeah.
Meat all required.
Don't screw it up.
Oh, right, right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
So those are the same.
That's the.
So, yeah, that's right.
And that's easy one for us to prioritize, because we just want to head on mat and not screw it up, so.
No pressure, no pressure.
No pressure.
Yeah, got it. So, we've got a couple of things happening, you know, in, in concert, but, yeah, the, the ones that are literally standalone, and then those, you're suggesting, perhaps, um, you know, we talked about uh, I don't, we, weeks ago about, uh, a pedestrian pathway or trails ad hoc committee, but it sounds like you can't have an ad hoc committee that's gonna work on something forever, it's gotta be a finite scope, but if we, if we make a finite scope, um, I mean, are you advocating that we can bind these all somehow? Cause I, I think it might dilute.
Well, there's, they're all separate projects, like the pedestrian, uh, walkway and pavement of, of, um. Uh, actually. These two are the same. Because this is a Burton pedestrian walkway on Burton Drive. Um, where is the other one? But that, that, this one, I don't know what, sure what this is, I think this, these two are the safe pedestrian pathway, the pet paid pedestrian pathway on Burton Drive, okay, that is really. These two are together. These two are the same thing. They, uh, the four crossings come with the safe pedestrian on, on Burton Drive.
You were just saying, but I, I'm gonna disagree, um, as I wrote this, when I read you saying, I'm driving. You know, from Selma to Bispo, uh, trying to get as far as I can towards Big Sur, I'm gonna be driving through Cambria. And, uh, uh, there are some places where pedestrians walk across Highway One. And what this says is that those places where motor vehicles on Highway One, you know, and pedestrians interact, that's what this one does, and this one's a long way from Highway One.
Okay, here's. Highway one. Here is first crossing, you're, and it's a safe walkway all the way to the middle school turnoff. We need a walkway there, this would go all the way up to a certain point, either one side of the road or the other. We would have a walkway along that, and then over here, it would be all the way to our demo, down to the crossing in Burton Drive, all the way over to Eaton Corner. And the, one in the middle is already done, ignore that, this is the other one, where we go in front of like Stammel Park, all the way over to the crossing of downtown Maine. So it has the, the implication is crossing and a walkway for a certain distance to get the pedestrians out of the busy, heavy traffic of the, of the people just turning on and so forth. So it's those four, four connections all that they, that is lacking for pedestrian safety.
So this, I think, uh, these are the next steps, but Jeff, go ahead, and then I've, you know, maybe, that's good, wow. Yeah, maybe we could simplify those, those all seem super related to me. I mean, there's three of them that have safe crossing.
Yep.
Pathway crossing. Can we just capture those under one broad umbrella, and I don't know the language? And then each one of those is like a sub, kind of, one, cause they're all, they're all common themes, so.
What differentiates the, the one, uh, crossing east west branch is it's a, it's a Caltrans. It's the county and Cambria against Caltrans, and the other one is the Cal, it's the, is entirely the county issue.
Yeah, I'm not questioning whose jurisdictions or who owns the property, whatever, but generally, we're talking about safe walkways or crossings that in one situation could entail communication with the county, in another, it could entail communication with a private landowner, that, how we do, cause we're not supposed to get into the how here, but it's, I mean, it's, it just seems to me, rather than having four separate goals there, that we could capture these under one goal, and then maybe thinking longer term, you know, beyond say twenty twenty four, that there's a prioritization, okay, we're gonna, our priority is gonna be number one for twenty twenty four, it's gonna be safe Highway One crossing between east west and ranch, and, and Renshaw. So, we activate on that, maybe there's another one that could go in there, and in twenty twenty five, there's something, so we've I don't know, it just seems to me we've got separate goals for essentially the same kind of broad umbrella.
Same goal, different locations.
Yes.
Yeah, Steve.
I was gonna go the other way and just say, simplify it, it seems like if there's one piece to this puzzle that we could do this year, or relatively quick would be the piece from the one entrance on the lodge, right? Cause it's not all the way in front of the lodge, because it really just starts where the driveway ends. If we could get the county to tell him, or at least make up their minds on what the, uh, design would be for that project, at least we'd have something for him to say no to.
Kermit, I'm gonna put this back here, because, uh, there are four other members of the committee, uh, committee that put their markers here, and we understand the relationship that you've described, uh, but I, I don't wanna lose that.
Yeah, I just think that that's a piece that needs to be done, it's a safety issue, and, um,
in terms of feasibility, it can be done perhaps more easily, and it's, it's finite, like, get after that one.
Yeah.
See, I don't, I don't see it that way, I see it all as one road, Burton Drive all gets done all at one time.
You're gonna have trouble on that corner, Kermit, how are you gonna get a, we've been told that the corner there at Burton, around that tight corner.
You mean Burton and Burton?
Burton and Burton, yeah, right? And that's why they've actually talked about drifting you through, cause I don't know who owns the trail.
Well.
That is, that is correct.
No, you know the one that goes down by Cali Cashdan's house and shoots out there?
Oh, yeah, that thing to that lot.
Yeah, that we've always used forever, that we're gonna take.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So, well, it, it, it's so much easier to handle it all together, because you're gonna be assaulting the county to get, spend money they don't wanna spend, um.
That gives me a clue, let's, let's, let's assign who is going to. Like, when this comes on the agenda, next month or in two months, however, when it comes up, um, you know, who's going to prep that agenda topic, and I've got a clue that probably Kermit is gonna take, who wants to take the lead on, on these four items. Right, like that.
Well, can we back up a little bit though? Because if we're looking at priorities, we put our dots to determine priorities.
Yes.
So, you know, the community park plan and not screwing up skate park, those are two biggest priorities.
So, yes.
But inventorying open space didn't really rise up there. Yeah, it's actually something that's very feasible, absolutely has to be done, and should be one of our priorities. Um.
It is one of our priorities.
But it's way, way, way lower, which is something, it's so feasible, and, and to understand how even to like, to create what Kermit wants, we have to understand that, so.
So, um, while you're on this, now the next step is, um, if, if things are getting no votes at all, well, that's okay, I mean, we're, 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 we're not gonna.
We'll tackle it now, but maybe.
Yeah, but if what you're saying is that, darn it, I want license to work on this with David, like, put your name up there, if what you're saying is, well, I want someone else to do it in the committee, that's okay too, but, uh, so, you know.
Yeah, isn't that staff work?
This is staff work.
Yeah.
And, and.
Is it like that, you do that?
He's gonna do it anyway.
And do you need any help from this committee?
No. He knows our capabilities. And I'd be handled, I'd be willing to handle all of it.
As, as, as.
So they're both big loans.
Yeah, and do you want like an ad hoc committee partnership, or do you want basically just the bill? Having this on the agenda as a stated goal gives you license to bring what you need to bring. Yeah, that's what I thought.
So, are we labeling this? Cause there's really kind of two things to this, there's trails, and there's safe pedestrian pathways.
Yeah.
So to me, those are the two buckets that those live in, they will over, they'll like connect, you know, they definitely cross each other. But trails and safe pedestrian pathways are different.
Two different things.
Two different things. If we bucket those that way, trails, safe pedestrian.
They, they will all, they won't all do the same, but they're pedestrian pathways first. Uh, and, and we, to make a multipurpose trails and expansion on some of it, cause you, you might not get that on Burton Drive.
I think we've got enough to do the next agenda.
Yeah, I, I make a motion, we extend this meeting out for another half hour. Twelve o'clock.
Okay, uh, so, who's, who's in favor of extending the meeting?
But I would, I would, I'd really like to make a quick point on my goal, is.
But, but can we do that? Can we answer this, and just this, for a moment? I, I don't forget that, but, you know, let's not drop what Kermit just suggested. Who's in favor of extending, I mean, we have ten minutes.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, so we have one who's in favor of not, uh, who's opposed to extending. Um, so let's wrap up.
Okay.
So, so, I'm gonna write distinguish between trails and, uh, pedestrian pathways.
Good.
Um, uh, now.
Why we let Kermit do that?
Mm-hmm.
Come up with a, an idea for that.
The only trail in, in, in mind is, well, underneath the highway.
And down.
So we have, uh, uh, I'll save a quarter, uh, secretary, uh, so Jeff Wilson is gonna produce minutes. I'm gonna work with this, we're gonna take the first pass at, what did we say here?
Right.
You're gonna nail that down, now, this is what I'm trying to say. You're gonna nail that down. Now, this is what I'm trying to say and we'll get it. Close enough in the next agenda and then we'll get to work on it.
Good.
And we'll start our project.
See, just back to Kermit's initial point when he was making at the beginning of the meeting, does he have a title now? Can he go tell people, hey, I'm this guy? Because that's what he needs and if I would say, I would bestow a title on him. If the CCSD could bestow the same title, that would at least give him some juice.
And so how do we wanna, do you have an idea?
No, not really, because I usually just lie about it when I'm in that position. I just tell people I have a title, so.
Pretend who said, when I go to the bar, I hand out Tommy's business card. No, but yeah, so uh.
We don't have to do that now. It's just a point.
Yeah.
Of knowing as he moves forward.
Yes. Yeah, uh Jeff.
Yeah, I just like to clarify on the, on the goal there, on the inventory, that it isn't just inventorying.
Yes.
That we begin to, begin to build a management plan. So inventorying one piece.
Yeah.
But then it becomes, I'm coming upon us, what are we gonna do then with those open spaces? How do we best manage those? And I'm assuming there's a lot of opportunity for better management.
Yep, once we get into it and push it, then we, we'll find out if the county. Needs an army, we need an army or something like that and go this or one guy can walk it through, you know. It will Caltrans grab it and say, yes, sure, why not? And you know, something like.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Who knows?
I don't know. I mean, these are CCSD owned properties and I don't know them, but they're in that book, right?
Yeah.
I'm assuming there are various levels of repair or disrepair or state. The so, some small, some bigger, but we begin building a management plan for those open spaces.
Yeah.
Not just inventorying them. That's my point.
Well, and I wanna understand, um so your comment about the, the A P Ns or whatever those things are. Um so that we can like decide whether or not we wanna do something on them. Because sometime we could do community gardens, we could do, we could do an open space, just clean park area, like we could bench, you know. Or use it to help us connect trails. So that's, yeah, so everything he's doing, I think is kind of critical.
Uh so.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah, um yeah. Um, yeah, on this one, okay, um. By, you know, there are a lot of entries there.
That is, Matt's, Matt's in charge of that and we, I think we put it up there because I would assume. We put it up there because we want to, as pros, say, we support this project. We will make sure it goes all the way.
Yeah, it's all the agenda and Matt, McElhenney.
Yeah.
Just, you know, you know, discuss it. How can we help?
And keep an eye on that.
He owns this one.
Yeah.
We don't need to sign someone from the committee to work with them. We're all. Okay, and here. Ownership for this one, uh it's like.
I'll do it.
I thought so, yeah, yes.
And I will attend if you like.
We're, I'm gonna try to get the dates and we'll come back in uh January and we'll. Discuss what it is. I think it's the fourth Wednesday in.
You know, and, and we can rotate people through that, I think. Yes.
So is that, is that counting the parks and recreation or is that parks and recreation?
County parks.
County park.
Yeah.
What about other?
Trails thing too, they have golf courses.
Okay, what about, oh, so what about? What about other county organization I'm specifically thinking about, like the um. Education.
Oh.
Board of Education, C U S D, or is that getting into territory where? We.
Well, the paved road to the.
Are you referring to?
Yeah, so what, the goal would be there, like to be so concise, would be to have an M O U with the school district. Saying that we can use their fields for parks and rec.
That's not here, this is, that would be.
No, I'm saying, we didn't, we didn't write it down that way.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah.
So we did not really specify that as a goal and I honestly believe that we need to let the C C S D sort out their issues with the school district. Before we ever tackle that because.
Yeah.
We got, they got some stuff.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
So. But that doesn't mean that's gonna necessarily continue, but hopefully it doesn't.
If we table it and revisit it, then maybe they will.
I guess my question was in terms of county days on, is it different?
Yeah, I'm gonna say no to the school aspect of my particular.
Okay.
Goal there.
Yeah, basically just for the, get us into county parks.
Yeah, Slow Post, um is what the dog park was associated with, they've split off and they're just trails now. So um I think they're in the county and they're fundraiser and they support building trails, so they.
Yeah, that's one of the aspects of county parks. When you go, they have that trails thing and they want you to try to get connected to the whole county trails thing.
Yeah.
Whatever it may be, so.
Useful if I write that down or you got it or?
I, I got that.
Thank you. Um. And.
I'll take the paved road.
I like that, thank you.
And so these are the leads. At, at some point, it can be proposed forming an ad hoc, but you'll, you know, at each meeting, they'll next. I don't know what it's gonna look like, but we'll hear from each of these. So, you know, beyond the agenda and it may be, well, let me report, but you know. And then Steve's gonna say, why are you being here? Another report and you know, eventually we're gonna get somewhere, right? I think this has worked its course. I'm pretty excited.
Me too.
Um and we've got um. Four minutes, are there any other, I mean, future agenda topics? This is it. Is there anything else we, we want? Agenda.
Uh just my presentation of those four projects.
Yeah. And how does that differ from?
It probably doesn't.
Right here, that was basically. That's on the agenda.
And we can assume that everything that, that's prioritized is gonna be on the agenda in some way.
Um.
Good point.
Right now.
Even if they just say, hell, no.
But yeah, if these didn't make the cut for now, um.
Can we just parking lot them? Yeah.
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 Yeah, it doesn't have a, bad to have a list of things we decided that weren't important.
Right.
And we'll see next year, maybe they will be more important.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a whole list of things I don't do every year. Maybe, maybe not. Anything else? Uh I should check the agenda, but I think we're done, we're done. Uh.
Just future blend item.
An item I just asked and this is done. Perfect, um and so it is ten fifty eight and I. All this meeting of the post committee insurance. Oh, almost early.
We're out of here.
At least not long.